Good luck, Mr. Chairman.
And per directions from my friend in the front row, I'm going to turn my mic on. Welcome out, everybody. We will try to have a good informative meeting for you today. I'd like to call, first of all, Mr. Mitchell to offer the invocation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for this meeting. Thank you for the residents who have come out to witness what we have to do on their behalf. Guide us in all of our decisions, keep us strong, keep us steadfast, and keep us true. These things we ask in thy name. Amen.
If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on the agenda are approval of minutes for the June 18th regular county council meeting.
Move approval of the minutes.
All right, any questions or amendments to the minutes? All those in favor of adoption of the approval of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item of the agenda are proclamations and special recognition. I'll call on Councilor Benton Blunt to introduce the Momentum Bike Club.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, and members of the community, today it is my distinct honor to recognize an outstanding organization that's made a significant impact on our community. Momentum Bike Clubs, established in 2010, is much more than a cycling group. It's a beacon of hope, empowerment, and community spirit. This club is dedicated to mentoring youth, particularly those from underserved neighborhoods, through the simple yet powerful act of biking. By providing a safe and supportive environment, Momentum Bike Clubs help young people develop essential life skills, build confidence, and foster a sense of belonging. Their mission is to use the bicycle as a tool to promote the physical, social, and emotional well-being of our youth. Through their regular rides, educational workshops, and committee service projects, they inspire young individuals to lead healthy, active lives while also instilling values of teamwork, resilience, and responsibility. The dedication of Momentum Bike Clubs' volunteers and mentors is truly commendable. They selflessly give their time, energy, and resources to ensure that each participant feels valued and supported. Their efforts have not only enriched the lives of our youth that they serve, but have also strengthened the fabric of our entire community. Today, we celebrate Momentum Bike Clubs' unwavering commitment to make Greenville a better place for all its residents. Their work exemplifies the positive change that can happen when we come together with a shared vision and a common purpose. On behalf of Greenville County Council, I extend our deepest gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to Momentum Bike Clubs. We're incredibly proud to have such an inspiring organization in our community, and we look forward to witnessing their continued success and positive influence. Make sure that you visit momentumbikeclubs.org for more info. And if the representatives for the bike clubs could stand and be recognized, please. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Blunt, and thank you for all you do for Greenville County. Appreciate you being with us tonight. All right, next item on the agenda are appearances on current agenda items, and we have eight or 10 members, three minutes. If you'll, as you're called, if you'll come up and give your name and address for the record, and we'll start with the first one. That is, that's on the public hearings, that's all right. Current agenda items.
Your first speaker is Jill Hood. Her item is Item 9A Greenville Arena Geo Bonds.
All right. Welcome.
I'm speaking on two things, so is this the one for the wellness center or the tax? Okay, all right. I'm Jill Hood. I'm from District 20. I live on 3 Tranrod Trail Travelers Rest. And $70 million for renovations, that's a lot of money. And according to the Fox Carolina, published July 8th, the well is the number 13 top-selling arena in the country. Concert sales are up nearly 23% since 2018. So why haven't some of these improvements been made with this extra money they're making? If the bond is approved for 20 years, this will be a tax increase for 20 years. The district generates money from premium seating, sponsorship sales, those advertising, property tax, accommodation tax revenue, rental fees, event promotions, food, beverage, merchandise sales, parking fees, taxes, ticketing, and surcharge. So why is there not enough money that they're making to do some of these renovations? It's ridiculous that at a time like now, when everything is so high, every time you turn around, something else is going up. We're paying more and more for gas and food, for insurance, for now Duke Power's going up, and then again next year. Every time you turn around, something is going up. Who is helping me when I have to have work done in my house? Nobody. We're paying. My husband and I are paying for it. But every time y'all raise the taxes for something else, it's affecting us, us the people, not just a few people, but it's affecting everybody in the county. And I'm against this, so I just wanted to say, this is something I do not think that we should be spending that much money right now on something like this. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. Chairman, your next speaker is Tom Anderson. His item is Item 9A Greenville Arena Geo Bonds.
Mr. Anderson, give us your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Tom Anderson, 650 North Academy, Greenville, 29601. I'm Skip Anderson, owner of Tri-State Merchandising and Event Management, so thank you for allowing me to speak in favor of the proposal to renovate Bon Secours Wellness Arena. I support this proposal for a number of reasons. The arena employs hundreds of workers that rely on the success of this venue. Many have thus, have this as a primary source of income, or as a secondary source of income to make ends meet. I personally employ up to 40 personnel to work almost every event at the arena. The Bon Secours Wellness Arena is one of 12 arenas we service for selling concert and sporting event merchandise. We are proud and fortunate to be part of the Bon Secours Wellness Arena. As merchandise vendors, we hear from event organizers, positive feedback like great workforce at Bon Secours. We have heard easy work with the group at Bon Secours, very professional staff. But then conversely, we have heard comments like cramped space is outdated, small concourse, lack of space for extra merch in food and beverage stands. I've seen Beth Paul and her management team make vast improvements over the past years to provide a professional and attractive concert and sporting event appearance for the patrons they serve. However, I'm here to tell you, the entertainment business is extremely competitive. When potential client, potential clients are looking to book various events, certain upgrades and renovations are necessary to keep up with other cities that have newer venues. The In-Market Arena in Savannah, for example, I have worked that arena and I've seen the success. As comparison to the new arena, which they didn't want this new arena at first, but now they love it because now they look back at the old Savannah Civic Center that was very worn in its time. We are also experiencing examples to compare to Greenville. The James Brown Arena in Augusta is updating their facility to meet the needs of today's competitive market. I hope that you support this proposal, and I support the business of workers who rely on the arena as a source of income. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next speaker.
Mr. Chairman, your next speaker is Robert Bullock. His topic is Item 9A Greenville Arena Geo Bonds.
Mr. Robert, may I just confirm, are you in Greenville County, or are you Anderson County?
I'm Anderson County, but I work at the arena.
Okay, I don't want to keep you from speaking, but can I just ask Council a quick question? Because I think, is there a rule that requires you to be in Greenville County to speak?
No, Mr. Chairman, there is none.
Okay, come speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Bullock, 6th way of Jackson Street, Anderson, South Carolina. And I'm here to support the renovations for the arena. I am stage tech. I am a stage tech worker. It's my primary income, along with hundreds others, and some using it as a supplement income. We got a great team there, along with Beth, Nikki, Phyllis. We get a lot of good reviews from tools. They compliment us on our efficiency, on our manning, but they also give us negative stuff. One thing in particular, I'm on a Ford truck 80% of the time, and one of their main concerns is the shipping dock. And they always comment, well, Charlotte does this, Columbia does this. And it's a bottleneck when we have to unload the truck, let it sit there, we're wasting time, energy, and efficiency. We also double handling, which we all know can cause accidents, okay? Greenville is an up-and-coming city. I would hate for us to be an option. The arena should not be an option. When they come here, they should say, we're going to the arena. Let's not give them an option. Let's keep the arena on top where it belongs and keep our people working. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Your next speaker is Phyllis Garrett. Her topic is Item 9A Greenville Arena Geo Bonds.
All right, and let's go ahead and have, since we've got so many speakers tonight, let's go ahead and have the next person be ready to present. You want to call that person out?
Yes, sir. That will be Gillian Semral.
Okay, if you'll just line up behind her, and we'll go through this. Welcome, Phyllis. Give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Phyllis Garrett. My address is 28 Monticello Avenue, Greenville, South Carolina. I am the owner of Stage Tech Productions, which is the provider of stagehand labor that sets up at the arena. I uniquely have been involved with the arena for 35 years, because the first years after I graduated Greenville Tech, I worked at the architectural firm that designed the arena. So I sort of know the arena like the back of my hand. And 25 years later, I own a company for the last 18 years that has done the work at the arena. We have a great crew. We work with great people at the arena, and we do the best that we can to provide the top stagehands for all the events there, big and small, anywhere from one person to 170 people at a time. The more larger these shows get, the more space they require. We only have X amount of space. And, you know, sometimes it is a safety concern for loading and unloading trucks. I don't know if any of you all realize what goes on behind the stage when you go to see a show, where the people back there doing all the moving and pushing and hanging of lights and sound and setting up decks and everything you see. So this is also a main source for many people, hundreds of people, for their livelihood every day. And so I would hope that we're able to provide some renovation to the building to further enhancing Greenville and everything that is brought to the arena. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Phyllis. Gillian, if you want to come up and introduce yourself, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. I am Gillian Semral, and my address is 1500 Water Lily Drive, Simpsonville, South Carolina, 29680. I am one of the owners of Gormley Wellness. We are a small business here in Greenville for chiropractic and spa services. We opened in 2020 and have been fortunate to work closely with the staff at the arena and including the Swamp Rabbits Organization. My dad is the chiropractor for the Swamp Rabbits. I have spent many, many hours at the well, even before he was the chiropractor. We went to a ton of concerts, hockey games. The arena has helped to create a better quality of life in Greenville and has had a significant impact in our community for the past 25 years. This includes the creation of jobs supporting many small businesses, including us, and numerous nonprofit groups. The arena provides a place for all members of our community here in Greenville to attend events like Swamp Rabbit Hockey Games, Monster Jams, and concerts. It has been a part of smaller events like school graduations that hold a special place in the people of Greenville's lives as well. The well also improves the quality of life of those in our community, for example, the Well Walkers. It's a staple venue in Greenville that brings our community together and also enjoy times with friends and families that appeal to many demographics. Without the arena, we would spend more time and money traveling to other big cities like Charlotte or Atlanta than any minimal tax increase. I would rather invest now in upgrades to the arena to make it a venue we can be proud of than a complete rebuild. As someone who uses the arena often and has previously attended events at the arena, it is average compared to other venues in other areas, and it is starting to show its age. For example, there are opportunities to improve from a fan slash event goer perspective, like ADA and safety and security improvements, along with the crowd movement and new seats. The arena is a great asset to Greenville, and we should prioritize this project so it lasts for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gillian. Next speaker, if you'll call up the next two speakers.
Mr. Chairman, the next two speakers are Talon Hawthorne and Ronald Bolan.
All right. Talon, welcome. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Talon Hawthorne, 104 Ward Law Street, Greenville, South Carolina, 29601. So hey, so good evening, everybody. My name is Talon Hawthorne. I'm a 25-year-old South Carolina native born in Anderson, and I was raised in Anderson County. And after graduating high school, I lived three hours south of London for school, and I gained the wealth of experience. And now I actually live here in downtown Greenville, along with being a business owner of a pop-up contemporary art gallery called Da Vinci House. And I want to start by saying that I grew up going to the Bon Secours Wellness Arena. I knew it as the BiLo Center, as a lot of us knew it as. My first memory with the arena was seeing a WWE match for the first time with my parents and watching my favorite wrestler, John Cena, slam somebody off the top rope. And I remember driving from Anderson to go see that event. I remember going to the circus with my parents, and I also remember a big moment of my life happening at the arena, which was graduating high school in 2017. So for 25 years, the arena has helped me to create a better quality of life, along with the people around me have been directly impacted by it. The arena also provides a place for all citizens of Greenville and beyond, to name a few, Anderson Belt and easily rent, along with attending concerts, like the W, like attending concerts and then other events like WWE, Monster Jams, Swamp Rabbit Games, high school graduations, and a plethora of diverse concerts, namely Zach Bryan that a lot of us probably were at. So without it, we would have to drive to Charlotte, Atlanta, Raleigh, you know, take flights to Chicago, New York, all these different things to experience some of these acts. And I would rather spend more money on the tax increase at times rather than to travel all these other places. And for families in the lower-income bracket, traveling is actually out of the question when it comes to some of these allegations, not allegations, but when it comes to some of these tax things that are being talked about. So the events at the arena are only affordable, are the only affordable entertainment events for some of the families without them having to drive to bigger cities. The arena also provides a venue, the arena provides a venue to enjoy much-needed time with friends, family, has entertainment that appeals to many demographics. As someone who spends probably too much money on art, entertainment, regularly, although we love the well, it is average compared to other venues, and it's starting to show its age. The reason that this upgrade and renovation is important to me is because beauty, the arts, entertainment, and bringing people together is actually really important for a local community. To close, I just want to say I support a minimal tax increase to ensure that the arena is upgraded and remains relevant for many years to come, as I raise a family and can continue to attract major acts for my family and friends to enjoy. The arena is a great asset for Greenville, and we should prioritize this project, in my opinion, to revitalize the building and campus so it lasts a long time. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Bolan, if you'll come give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Ronald Bolan. I live at 106 Palmer Street, Easly, South Carolina, 29640. I have been day one at the arena. I was there the very first show that ever came in, and I've been there ever since. I've seen the growth that Greenville has had because of this venue. It started with Peace Center, and it has moved on with the arena, with not only just the concerts, but the events themselves, like the basketball tournaments we've had come in. They bring in a lot of money into Greenville that has allowed Greenville to grow to the city that it is nowadays. I remember when there were parts of Greenville you didn't want to go to, and downtown was where it was at mostly. Now Greenville is rated in a lot of places, top five in the country, because of what we have to offer. And these two venues, both Peace Center and the arena, especially being the arena, have allowed that to happen for the city of Greenville. And we need to have this happen. It's 25 years old. I work, me and my counterparts over here, we're in this building in and out, day in and day out. We have seen the wear and tear this building has taken over the last 25, 25 years. It needs an upgrade before it gets to the point where we just need to replace the entire building. And I believe that just this, this little amount of money will be replaced in a quick amount of time. And like they said, it employs, we employ hundreds of people every year. And without this, without this steady job, you know, where would the taxes come from? You know, small businesses, where would they come from? You know, we get many, many new small businesses due to the events and shows that come through the arena. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll go ahead and call the last, we have three more speakers. If you'll go ahead and call those three up.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the next three speakers are Michael DeRoche, Jason Gillespie, and Thomas Dashiel.
All right, Michael, you're up next. Give us your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Michael DeRoche. I'm at 9 Fairview Place in Greer, South Carolina. I've been at the well for over 18 years, working there, almost every single event you can think of. If you had a car that's 25 years old, you know it needs some renovation, it needs some work to keep it looking good and running well. That place brings in some amazing changes every show. I don't know if you know what it takes to bring in a show. It's hundreds of workers assembling stages, lights, just costumes. There's hundreds of jobs to get done, and then the very next, that very evening, we take it all down, fill it in with dirt, do a monster jam with trucks. Then two days later, we're doing hockey and ice, and then a basketball game. That place sees some wear and tear. We really just need it to stay competitive with the other arenas in the nation so that we can keep bringing in the high talent and the big shows to keep bringing in the money into Greenville County. That's all I just want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jason Gillespie. Welcome, Jason. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Jason Gillespie, 111 Saratoga Drive, Greer. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to speak about the arena and the impact it's had on the community. I know you have a lot of hard choices a lot of times, what you do and don't do, and where you spend our money. And I think the arena is one of those places where that money comes back in the form of those taxes. You might spend, I don't even want to say the number, how much somebody spent to see concerts recently, but that money is spent eating, staying, you know, staying in hotels and those folks that come here. So it's a big impact to the community, and it is an investment. It is a lot of money, but it is a good investment, and we appreciate your thought and hope that you'll move forward and choose to put this resolution out there and get this process started so they can make these improvements, so we can continue to be a great place. If you ever worked downtown during the basketball tournament, you don't go out to eat that day because those 16,000 people are swarming these streets until it's time to go. So there is a bigger impact. It's not just the arena. So I think that's what our tax dollars are for, is creating those opportunities, just like Project Anchorage or the other things that you have. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Thomas, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Thomas Dashiel. I live at 460 East Blackstock Road in Spartanburg, South Carolina. I do not live in Greenville County. I work in Greenville County. I have toured extensively, both with Ringling Brothers and Barnum Bailey Circus, Carrie Underwood, The Rolling Stones, and several other national touring acts. I have a unique perspective on the arena in Greenville, as I've worked there and I've been there in a touring capacity. Let me tell you, trying to put a 35-truck show into a two-doc truck space is not easy. It takes a lot of time, and it takes a lot of planning. Can it be done? Yes, but it's not going to be quick. The $70 million that you're discussing for this arena, yes, that could go to other projects within the county, but if you had to rebuild the arena from scratch, it would cost upwards of $300 million in today's economy. I helped build the new Viking Stadium in Minneapolis, Minnesota. That project took well over a year and a half from breaking ground and was, I want to say, in the neighborhood of $250 million. That's a quarter of a billion dollars. Granted, it's a football stadium, but it's on par with what it would cost to build a brand-new arena in downtown Greenville, if you could find the land to build it on and still operate the existing arena until that one opened. Myself and everyone else who works at the arena depends on that for income, whether it's primary income or secondary income. The arena brings in a lot of shows and a lot of income to the surrounding businesses, and I would like to see this resolution move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Appreciate it. All right, that concludes our appearances on current agenda items. The next item on the agenda are public hearings, and I'm going to call on Chairman Butch Kirven for Gower Corporation, Project Anchorage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 7A, Gower Corporation, formerly Project Anchorage. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance authorizing an execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Gower Corporation, formerly known as Project Anchorage, with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto. Ms. Stone, is anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kirven, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Mr. Chairman, I declare this public hearing closed.
All right, next item on the agenda are capital project sales tax referendum ordinance. I'll call on Chairman Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding the enactment of an ordinance pursuant to the Capital Project Sales Tax Act Title 4, Chapter 10, Article 3 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, providing for the imposition of a 1% sales and use tax upon defray costs of project and issuance costs and other matters related thereto. We do have several speakers signed up in favor and in opposition, and we'll start with those who are in favor this evening. Same protocol that we've been following, please come up, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Please go ahead and call our first, why don't we call our first, second, and third speakers so folks can be ready.
Our first speaker is Caroline Mahathy, then Jeffrey Hildebrand, and Gaye Sprague.
As always, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. And normally, when I come up, I'm very anti-government, and I want y'all not to do something, but tonight is a little different. I applaud y'all's efforts to actually take a risk and make a difference, and the decision that you're going to make is probably not going to be a popular one, but we appreciate it. I'm not going to give you any of the statistics. Y'all know them all. Everybody can read them. We all, we all have them. We know how long it takes to, how long we are down the road as far as having road repair. But we understand how important road and bridge repair is and how important it is to our economy. Sales taxes, in my opinion, are the fairest tax when they're not on essential items. If I want to spend X number of dollars on a dress, and you, we both have on blue dresses, you can pick on, you know, the dress that you want. That's, that's my right, but understanding that I'm going to need to have the obligation to pay in taxes. It's something we can choose to do. We're not, we're not asking y'all to tax food and other various essential items. It allows Greenville County to spread the revenue around. We just heard how many people come into Greenville County every day, whether it's to attend something at the BiLUs, excuse me, the Well, at Heritage Park, or the Peace Center, ball games. They're coming in and spending our money and using our roads and wearing our roads down. This is an opportunity to allow them to help share the burden of, that they're creating. And most importantly, redoing the budget isn't going to find the money we need to improve our roads and our bridges. It's just not there. And the whatever 12 million, whatever the number is that we get every year, y'all are all going to be dead before all the roads get done if, if, if we wait on that. And a lot of y'all are a lot younger than I am. Again, thank you for taking the risk. Again, thank you for taking your time. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Caroline, before you sit down, will you name an address for the record?
Oh, sorry.
No, you're so fine. Thank you.
Caroline Richardson-Mahathy, 3706 East North Street, Greenville, South Carolina, 29681.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Jeff Hildebrand, 105 Melon Drive, Greer, South Carolina, 29650. I am speaking in favor of the, the 1 cent resolution. I had a whole thing prepared, but after I saw this memo that came out today that said, "Current and future community leaders unite to oppose the proposed gas tax," it, some part in here really got to me because I do work with the C-Funds Committee, so I am infinitely familiar with how that works and how those funds are derived. One of the things that it mentioned in here was that we only get 15% of the gas tax money of the 26 cents, and they want 80% of that to be coming back. I need to help you understand that if you go to the state and you want them to give you 80% of all those gas tax dollars, they may give it to you, but they're going to give you the entire inventory of secondary roads and bridges and intersections that go along with it. And they will sink this county. Their roads are in as bad, if not worse, condition than the county's. Secondary roads get no federal funding, so they're at the bottom of the barrel in funding from the state. C-Program partners with the county. We do great things. Road costs now, to reclaim a road, are approaching a million dollars for a two-lane road mile. So, if you have 12 million, we have 5 million, $17 million, guess what? We're doing 17 miles. When you've got 1,800 miles, you're talking literally at that rate, over 100 years before you cycle back around. Roads last 30 years if you're lucky. So, I, we can't, we can't wait. It's the little Dutch boy with his finger stuck in the dyke. If we don't do something now, we are going to leave to our children, our grandchildren, dirt roads. So, we've got to move forward with this. I applaud all of you guys that have made the tough choices. I know it has come at great sacrifice to some of your political careers as they stand, but at the end of the day, doing the right thing is always the right thing. Thank you.
Gaye Sprague, 10 Gray Street in Greenville. It has been my honor to serve on the Roads Commission, the Capital Project Sales Tax Commission. Our chair is also here tonight, Ray Lattimore. Thank you so much for your leadership in this matter. We know that we have a challenge to face. More than half the roads in Greenville County are in fair or even poor condition. The longer we wait to repair them, the more repair is needed, and it just costs more and more. The South Carolina Department of Public Safety records indicate that in a recent five-year period, Greenville County was number one in traffic cash, traffic crashes, number two in serious injuries from traffic crashes, and number one in traffic fatalities of the counties in South Carolina. These are real people getting hurt, killed, and suffering economic loss. In South Carolina, local governments have very few tools to use for maintaining and repairing roads. But before you tonight is one of those tools that doesn't make you have to raise property taxes. The money is collected here, and it's set for a very small administrative fee from the Department of Revenue, who does all the work to collect it. It stays here, and as mentioned earlier, estimates are that about 30% of that is paid by visitors, will be paid by visitors. The tax is not levied on unprepared foods, prescription drugs, or motor fuel, life's necessities. The voters know what locations they're paying for, and that list was developed through an unprecedented cooperation of county staff, city staffs, and SCDOT. And the projects that are on that very long list are selected based on objective criteria and public input. The process that has brought us here tonight is and has been transparent and will continue to be, especially with the implementation of a citizens oversight committee that will receive regular reports in public, along with the reports that will be received by council as we go along, an added layer of transparency. Yes, there are SCDOT-maintained roads on this list, but they are roads that are known to be issues, and they simply have no foreseeable funding because of the intense competition for SCDOT funding across our states. Our citizens who live on these roads deserve safe roads, too. Please move this matter forward to referendum, and thank you so much for this time.
Thank you. You call the next three speakers, please.
The next three speakers are GP McLeer, Brandy Amadon, and Terry Merritt.
She come forward. Just a reminder, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. GP McLeer, 507 South Main Street, Fountain Inn. I'm GP, I am the mayor of being, of being mayor of the city of Fountain Inn, one of the best cities in the county. I know the Capital Project Sales Tax is an item of great debate between county council members, but I wanted to take this opportunity to provide input on behalf of my community of 13,000 and growing. Much of the debate I have heard at the county level has been over whether or not citizens should pay twice for a road. I wholly understand this sentiment. In many ways, I don't disagree, but the math doesn't add up for communities like mine. Decades ago, our city worked with our state delegation to move nearly all of our roads out of our city road system and into the state and county systems. Name a road in Fountain Inn, it's likely a state or county road. I do not see a way in which our highest road needs are met in a reasonable amount of time, given our current math. Cost of repaving in asphalt just hit 500,000 a mile. Reclamation you just heard is nearing 1 million a mile. Interstates and bridges are even more. Fun fact, in 2018, one cent of state gas, one cent of state gas tax collected paved 114 miles of two-lane roads. In fiscal '23, it paved 91. Pair of these costs with DOT's 10-year plan, which prioritizes interstates and bridges, and you get a road funding mechanism that will likely not reach the local roads we desperately need paved and the intersections we desperately need repaired. Our state's gas tax dollars are being used on state roads, just not the ones we're talking about. They're paving interstates and fixing bridges because a dollar only goes so far these days. For example, the intersection with the most number of accidents in my community, Howard Drive, Valley View, and North Main, it's three state-owned roads that, combined with commercial on all sides, create a very confusing intersection with no light. The cost of that product is $5.6 million. As of today, I do not know when this intersection will be remedied. I have tried advocating it every way I know possible, but I do know I'll have more accidents before it's repaired. It's not on DOT's list. It is not on the CTC's list. It is not on the GPAT's list, which stretches to 2030 and beyond, but it is on the CPST list. Look, the fact of the matter is, residents I hear from don't care who owns the road. They want it fixed. They're tired of being told, "I can't do anything about it. It's not on the state list. It's not on the county list." They're tired of government continuing to say, "It's not my job. It's Columbia's job, or it's DC's job." Sometimes you got to do it yourself. That's why I'm asking you to let our residents decide this question. Should our highest priority road projects wait another 20 or 30 years for state gas tax money to catch up with our needs? Or do we take it upon ourselves and those that visit here to get it done much sooner? I say let the voters decide because there's no harm in asking the public for their opinion on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. I'm Brandy Amadon, 7 Sullivan Drive, Travelers Rest. I am the mayor of the city of Travelers Rest, the actual best city in Greenville County. I appreciate everyone allowing us to come speak tonight. We want to, again, appreciate county council staff. Everyone has been so great to work with as we put this forward. And so, I'd love to talk about, I know Travelers Rest is a small blip on the whole 500 roads to consider, but we have three major improvements that this would make a huge impact to safety and traffic flow, not just for the city, but our surrounding areas in the county. So, first, we have the northernmost intersection at Highway 25 and Tigerville Road between Spinks Car Wash and Spinks Gas Station. The intersection improvement there will be huge improvement, improvement for traffic flow and safety at this busy intersection. And you guys know, a lot of our growth is coming up to that area as well. The next intersection includes Hawkins Road, Point Set Street, and Highway 25. It's currently the most confusing intersection that serves as an access point to Main Street, the Willis Gas Station, I think, number two for those locals. So, the work here would improve traffic flow again and safety while benefiting the entrance to the city. And then lastly, we have Row Road and Highway 25 intersection, and this pedestrian intersection would be a great improvement to traffic crossing from Highway 25, so Main Street, 25, from McDonald's to CVS over to Walmart, which would be a big deal for those who are walking in our community. Fully understand both sides of the argument to consider yet again a tax increase for Greenville County, but I would ask Greenville County council members to consider to let the voters to decide what we think is best. As one of those voters, like GP said, I don't care whether it's a city road or a state road, or whose fault or whose responsibility it is to get the roads up to par, we just want the roads improved. If we keep doing the same thing, we'll get the same results. I'm excited about the possibility of letting our residents decide on a clear list of improvements and how we pay for it. I'm personally happy to pay the 1% sales tax. We've got to trust someone to take care of our roads and highways, and I'm confident that our county staff will know and deliver only if they have the funds, and that we all know the funds have to come from somewhere. I see one of our main jobs as elected officials to make decisions that impact our whole community for betterment, and this is one of those times where I think the residents are tired of waiting on us and want to see us move forward to action for our roads. So, I appreciate you all considering to take this leap of faith and allowing voters to make the final call. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Terry Merritt. I serve as the mayor of the city of Malden, which is the head of the Golden Strip, which is a nice city in the upper state. I live at 214 Fairfield Drive, Malden, South Carolina, 29662, for the last 48 years in this house. But I join you this evening in support of Greenville County's Capital Penny Sales Tax Initiative. It is the only tool that will help us begin to fix our broken roads, relieve congestion, and make various safety improvements throughout our county. Since first being elected to office in 2014, the one concern I continue to hear from residents and businesses is the condition of our roadways. "Pave the roads," they say. "Relieve congestion," they demand. "Do more and do it now." In Malden, we have tried to do more. Several years ago, city council committed to assigning two mills of its general funds toward road paving and improvements. In this year's budget, this amount's of just over $400,000 toward resurfacing projects. At a cost of about a million dollars a mile to resurface, we won't be able to scratch the surface of what is needed for city roads, let alone trying to improve county or state roads. But this penny isn't just about Malden, it's about all of us, Greenville County residents. Every day, we travel roads that are owned or maintained by various governmental entities. We share these roads with interstate commerce, tourists, and our neighbors. The proposal before you would guarantee funding for projects that would affect ever resident of this county. And the best of all, 30% of the money raised will come from those who don't live here. The proposed referendum and list of road improvements may not be perfect, and it may not be everything we want, but it's a start. I do not give my support lightly, and I sincerely appreciate this county council for your leadership and wisdom to put such an important question to the voters of this great county. I believe it is the voters who should decide this question, and I urge you to give Greenville County residents the right to vote on this referendum and let their voices be heard this November. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Please call our last two speakers.
The last two speakers in favor of the proposed are Diana Olga and Charles McCune.
Thanks so much for being here. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing us to speak today. My name is Olga Diana. I live in Greenville County, 31 Winkle Lane, Taylor, South Carolina. I think I'm going to shorten up my speech because everything was said I support, and it's basically repeating the same things. We have difficulties to maintain the roads. We have a lot of people coming to Greenville County, and I think it's only fair that the visitors helping us to maintain those roads and enjoying driving. He enjoying our beautiful city and our beautiful county. It's sad to think of, unfortunately, we have very difficult, we have a highest rate of issues on the road, people dying on the roads because of conditions of the roads. And it would be one of the biggest priorities to make roads safe. I would like to say that we are in support and favor of roads being fixed. The penny taxes is the best way, in my opinion, because that does not affect people's ability to continue buying the food or buying medications, people not getting their taxes raised for the real estate. And thank you so much for all the hard work you do.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Charles McCune, although my friends call me Stan, and I'm from District 20, 305 Galton Drive in Greenville. I am a, I consider myself a fiscal conservative. I traditionally oppose taxes. I oppose the property tax millage increase. I've opposed gas taxes in the past. But I do also love Greenville, and I feel like we're at kind of an inflection point here with the county with regard to what we need to do about the road situation. And obviously, it's a major source of angst. As you all know, 2/3 of voters, say, in Greenville County say it's the number-one problem with Greenville County. I would personally agree with that statement as well. And we've gone for 10 years waiting on the state, the Department of Transportation, and others to fix the roads, and the reality is that it hasn't happened so far. And as others have already said, I don't- And as others have already said, I don't, I don't believe it's going to happen. The Department of Transportation has a massive backlog of other projects, and I think it's highly unlikely that we're going to see money coming from the state level down to our level. And I'll add as well, I think that to expect at this stage for the state to do that and to continue just waiting, I believe, is a cop-out. I believe our only choice as a county, unfortunately, is that we fix these roads as a county. And I believe that most, if not all, members of county council ran on platforms of one form or another stating that they would fix these roads. But where's the money gonna come from? My understanding is we need about two billion dollars in order to fix Greenville County's roads. Billion, two billion? I've heard some suggest that we just need to better allocate county resources. I don't believe that moving a few dollars here and there and making a few changes on a spreadsheet are going to produce two billion dollars. And I believe that really our best solution is the, is the penny sales tax. It's a temporary tax that doesn't tax groceries, is my understanding. We use for specific roads, and so it won't just be used willy-nilly. And unfortunately, I think we're just out of alternatives at this point. Waiting on the state or DOT won't work. Reforming county budgets won't generate anywhere near two billion dollars. And it's time that county council, and I would speak to my fellow Greenvilleans, have some moral courage here and be willing to support a tax that the county needs. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we have several speakers who will be speaking in opposition, and I'll ask you to call the first three speakers, please.
The first three speakers are Diane Vreeland, Jill Hood, and Sharice Krieger.
Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you so much. Diane Vreeland, on behalf of Greenville County Republican Women, four-thirteen Heather Falls Lane, Simpsonville. I know that we desperately need to fix our roads and infrastructure here in Greenville County, and I understand that you see a need to pass a capital sales tax project referendum to accomplish that monumental task. Having said that, I think many of you on the council are tone-deaf to the will of the people. I've spoken many times that there is a public perception and mistrust of how budgeted road and infrastructure monies have been spent and/or transferred out of their respective accounts in the past. I stand here today to ask once again that this council immediately conduct an internal forensic audit of all budget line items that relate to our roads and infrastructure. The public perception is that these funds have been mishandled, and the only way to put those concerns to rest is to do the appropriate audit. I don't understand why this has not been done, given the public's dismay. Let me be clear. This referendum does not stand a chance of being passed until you can prove that our hard-earned tax dollars have been spent properly. I humbly ask that you reconsider your position on this matter so that Greenville County can move forward with the respect and the trust that a body such as this should have. Remember, you work on our behalf. I would like to hand a copy of my statement to the clerks so that it is part of the public record, and I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Diane.
Hi, I'm Jill Hood again, Three Tram Rod Trail, Travelers Rest. I'm against this one-cent sales tax because I look back at several years, and I haven't seen any roads being worked on, maybe one little section or something like that somewhere. And I'm like, or I agree, that there needs to be an audit to see exactly where the money is going, because all counties get federal and state funding from gas tax, and we get this charged on our taxes, these road maintenance fees. So where is all that money going to? Because I'm not seeing anything, and nobody else is either. And why aren't developers not investing more money on the roads? Because they're the ones building all these new homes, and it's bringing in more traffic and stuff like this. Instead of allowing all these people to keep building and building and building all these homes over and over and just crowding the roads even more, why aren't we trying to fix the roads before we try to bring more people in? So that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sharice Krieger. I reside at two-eleven Morgan Court in Greer. That's District Twenty-one for the last twenty years. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to address the county council with regards to the pending sales tax increase intended to be a question on this November's ballot. The increase being proposed is one percentage point, six percent to seven percent, which actually represents a sixteen-point-eight percent increase. While that does not seem to be a very big increase to some, for seniors on fixed incomes and low-income families, it can be a significant hit. I've had an opportunity to look at the biennium budget for twenty-four and twenty-five, and based on the information provided, cannot determine specifically how and where the funds are being generated and/or spent. The budget document is written in language geared toward an audience knowledgeable about city, county, and state jargon. Being a citizen not versed in these types of documents, just looking at the lines displayed in the budget and the generalities used to describe those line items, it is extremely difficult to determine the real requirement and/or if there is a real need to increase the sales tax. Therefore, I am proposing this evening that this sales tax increase ordinance be denied, delayed, until the new county council has been seated. After all, it will be the responsibility of the new county council to work within the approved budget. And seeing how the current county council got us in this financial position to begin with, where they feel a sales tax increase is required, it seems to me it is only prudent to allow the new county council some time to evaluate the financial position of Greenville County. This will allow the new county council time to develop the appropriate financial strategy, evaluating and addressing the county's financial situation before the taxpayers get saddled with another additional financial burden. In addition, the sales tax increase ordinance question is written, does not provide a very clear or succinct picture as to where the additional funds will be utilized and/or where, why there are shortfalls in the current county council budget. It is my opinion, as a taxpayer, we should be given all the facts and not just an abbreviated picture of the situation as presented by this current county council. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you please call, please call the remaining speakers? Yes, thank you.
Gary Collins, Derek Quarles, Lisa Bracewell, and Joe Dill.
Thanks so much. Come forward, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Gary Collins. I'm at two-oh-one Squires Creek Road, Simpsonville. That's District Twenty-seven. Mr. Chairman, Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. There are a lot of variables that go into the condition of our roads as they are now, and it goes from the overdevelopment. It goes from the ten years of not producing what we need to do with our tax money. That's a given. So let me go on to the meat of my story. I want to speak on the capital project sales tax to raise a billion dollars over eight years. That's a lot of money in eight years. Okay? What's referred to as a penny tax is a one percent sales and use tax that will have an increase on goods that Greenville County residents purchase, and it is an increase from six to seven percent, and that's nearly seventeen percent in additional sales tax at the time when people are squeezed by the highest inflation rates in decades. We're at fifteen-point-nine percent inflation in this nation. That's just, it's hard to put meat on the table. Okay? But my point is, these increases, increasing rates, are hitting people hard, and not just at the grocery store, not just at going back to school, but the school district is raising our millage, the fire department is raising our millage, you just raised our millage, and now you want another? For roads that should have been taken under your watch? Forgive me. Okay? So as a Columbia watchdog outlet, The Nerve, who I'm in contact with frequently, they recently reported that the state surplus totaled nine-point-three billion dollars last year, and that includes two separate state funds for county road projects for paving. It's a concerning fact. So the state has funds set aside for county roads. So the project's out of that nine billion. Come on. Our legislative delegation needs to get on the ball, and as a county, we need to ask them to get on the ball. In a state where we produce four-hundred-and-thirteen million dollars in earmarks, what? And you can't pave a road? The earmarks are going to the wrong people for the wrong purposes. For every gallon of gas brought in Greenville County, twenty-six cents is sent to Columbia, but only four cents is returned. And I know it's been mentioned. Well, it needs to be mentioned again. You are being fleeced, and you're allowing it to happen to your people. In addition to this amount, our own road funding county budget the previous years was allotted for twelve million, and I'm gonna have to be cut short, but it's gonna get good. But anyway, forgive me. But to the residents I've asked, one-third of them said the ballot is good. Two-thirds we need to work on. And because of the hastened development, okay, to get this as an initiative, we have failed the residents of Greenville County. I ask that you deny it.
Thank you.
Can you start this time over, please? I wasn't speaking. No, you're good. That was fine.
Name and address for the record.
Derek Quarles, three-ten Garrison Grove Drive, Simpsonville. What I'm about to say may offend some of you, and if it does, good. If it doesn't, perhaps you're doing the right thing. My name is Derek Quarles. I reside at three-ten Garrison Grove Drive in Simpsonville. I stand before you tonight to express my concerns regarding the proposed penny tax. As someone deeply invested in this well-being of our community, I fully understand the dire need for road repairs and infrastructure improvements. Our roads are in a deplorable state, and it's clear that action must be taken to address these pressing issues. While I recognize the importance of this tax and the potential benefits it promises, I find myself unable to support it at this time. My hesitation stems from a profound lack of confidence in several of our current elected council members. These individuals, through their actions and decisions, have demonstrated a troubling lack of integrity and an inability to faithfully represent the best interest of our community. I live in District Twenty-five, the poorest district in Greenville County. I personally know people who struggle daily to pay their bills, who are forced to choose between paying for medicine or buying groceries. Asking these individuals to bear an additional tax burden is not something I can support, especially when I lack confidence in the current leadership to manage these funds responsibly. The funds from this penny tax are indeed restricted and earmarked specifically for road repairs, but what assurance do we have that the process will be handled transparently and efficiently? Given the past performance of and ethical lapses of some council members, I'm concerned that even these restrictions, the execution may fall short of our expectations. It's not enough to simply allocate funds. We must also ensure that these entrusted, those entrusted to manage these funds and resources are competent and trustworthy. Unfortunately, the track record of some council members does not inspire confidence. We deserve leaders who uphold the highest standard of integrity and accountability. This is no slight to the commissioners who worked hard on this measure. I respect and appreciate their efforts and find, and their efforts to find solutions to our infrastructure problems. However, the current environment of mistrust and lack of accountability makes it difficult for me to support this tax. I look forward to the newly elected council and wait for the day when others are no longer here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Bracewell. I live at forty-one oh-four Highway four-fourteen in Landrum, South Carolina. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am coming to oppose the one percent sales tax. I've lived in Greenville County all my life, and the sales tax that would be imposed would cause a hardship on many people. As many have said already, everything is so costly now. Food, gas, insurance, taxes already, everything is so costly. People can't afford this. So we need to stop that. You know, you need to deny that because it's ridiculous. And I also agree that there needs to be a forensic audit done on, to find out where all the money is going. There should be money with the amount that's in the budget that would cover our roads. Also, developers need to take responsibility because they're also in this area causing damage to our road. They need to be paying for this because they are causing part of this problem. And also, question that I haven't heard mentioned tonight, the first huge tax increase that was passed, where's that money going? Okay? First, it was mentioned that it would cover our roads. What happened? That's a question that I have, and I'm sure that everybody in this room would ask that So I strongly encourage you to deny this. This is not a good move. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Dill.
Good to see you.
Good to see you as well. Thanks for being here.
Chairman Seaman, it's good to see you, Mr. Dill. I'm not here to beat up on you. My name's Joe Dill. You're gonna need that. My address, two-twenty-eight Highway one-oh-one, Landrum, South Carolina. That's in Greenville County. And I'm glad to be here, but I didn't want to be here. I came here to try to keep you from stepping in a pothole. Now, what you need to do is stop this thing right now. Take a long look at it. We did this a few years ago, didn't we, Mr. Kirby? We tried this same thing, and when I started looking at it, I said, "Well, they created the same plan." I talked to some of your staff. They said, "Well, we pulled up some of that stuff." Pennington Road was one I saw, boom, hit me right in the head. We paved it, the county did, two years ago when I was on council. It's on, it was on the list, but the staff went back and took it off. Several things I've seen on there, there's potholes, things that are problems, that are gonna create a problem, and the people out here in the community, as you've already heard, they have dug out pieces of it right now. You want to fix the roads? Listen to what the public has to say. Let's quit trying to make everybody mad and fight and argue. I think you have the ability to do that. That's all I ask you to do. Just stop and take a long look before you go farther, because it's not good, what I'm seeing. And I got a big picture from out here. When I was setting up here, I had a focus. Now, I got a picture, a big picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dill. That's all our speakers for this evening, so we'll declare this public hearing closed.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Seaman. Appreciate everybody speaking tonight. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item is nine A. Chairman Kirby, Greenville Arena District Geo Bond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the, the resolution that would authorize a public hearing to be held. I move for adoption a resolution calling for a public hearing to be held upon the question of the issuance of not exceeding seventy million dollars of general obligation bonds of Greenville Arena District, South Carolina, and to provide for the publication and notice of such hearing, which right now looks like it would be held if approved on August twentieth, twenty-twenty-four.
All right. You've heard the motion. Motion is a resolution. All those in favor of adoption of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
We have a new system on the roll call, so if there's any issues, we'll do it by voice, but if we've got it, there we go. But if we've got it, there we go.
Chairman, you have eight in favor and four opposed.
All right. Thank you. The resolution is adopted. Next item on the agenda is the opioid lawsuit settlement.
One right before that, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Sorry.
This is for the Metropolitan Sewer Subdistrict enlargement request for public hearing. I move for adoption a resolution ordering a public hearing on the question of the enlargement of the territory of the Metropolitan Sewer Subdistrict and other matters related thereto. Is it off? My apologies. I've got the old agenda. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the opioid lawsuit settlement. Chairman Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption a resolution approving Greenville County's participation in the proposed settlement of the opioid-related claims against Kroger.
All right. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor of adoption of the resolution approving Greenville County's participation, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item is Item D, abandon and close the right-of-way of University Ridge. Chairman Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption a resolution to initiate the abandonment of 72,162 square feet of the right-of-way of University Ridge in connection with Greenville County's University Ridge Development Project.
All right. Any questions on the resolution? All those in favor of adoption of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, or ordinances at third reading. I'll call on Dr. Fant for Item A, two zoning ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. CZ 2024-029, property located at 106 Camden Drive, Greenville, requesting rezoning from R 7.5 to S 1. I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the zoning ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item, 30.
CZ 2024-030, property located at 103 Alco Street and Howcock Street, Greenville, requesting rezoning from R 12 to R 9. I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the zoning ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item, 10B. Chairman Kirby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Gower Corporation, formerly Project Anchorage Fee in lieu of tax agreement. I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Gower Corporation, formerly known as Project Anchorage, with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto.
All right. Before we vote on this, we should have asked Ms. Seaman. She has asked for a recusal, so she's gonna leave while we vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. You have heard the motion. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. We'll wait for Ms. Seaman to come back, and we'll go into second reading on ordinances.
Just as a heads up, Mr. Chairman Fant, I'm gonna ask for a hold on this one again. I apologize for the, it'd be the next zoning ordinance on the agenda, second reading.
All right. You want to read that through? You want to go ahead and hold it?
I'll go ahead and read it for the record, and then we can act on Mr. Shaw's motion. CZ 2024-021, property located at 2222 and 2024 East Lee Road, Taylor's, requesting rezoning from R 20 to R 10. The planning commission recommended approval, and the committee recommended denial. On behalf of the committee, I move to deny the ordinance at second reading.
All right. There's a motion to hold. All those in favor of holding CZ 2024-21, please say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, we'll hold that till next meeting. The next item on the agenda is 11B, the Capital Project Sales Tax Referendum Ordinance. Chairman Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of an ordinance enacted pursuant to the Capital Project Sales Tax Act Title IV, Chapter 10, Article III of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, providing for the imposition of a 1% sales and use tax upon referendum approval, the form of the ballot to be used in connection therewith, the authorization of the issuance of general obligation bonds, Greenville County, subject to such referendum, to defray costs of projects and issuance costs and other matters related thereto.
All right.
Roll call, please, Mr. Chairman.
All right. You've heard the motion. Any questions on the motion? Any comments on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Blunt?
I've heard this comment made a lot around Greenville County, but I can honestly tell you, I haven't heard it once in District 19. The citizens don't care if it's a county road or a state road. And every person I've went up to their door and talked to them, they've said, of course I care if my county tax money pays for state roads. So while, and this is not to throw any judgment on any other councilman up here, but we are supposed to listen to our constituents. And so it's very easy for me when I had absolutely no opposition, because once people understood, it made no sense to them, a giant question mark. So I do listen to my citizens, and that's why I can't support the Capital Project Sales Tax, and will be voting no.
Mr. Harrison?
Chairman, I actually agree with Mr. Blunt, but the beautiful thing about this, I just want to make sure everybody understands, we're not imposing a tax this evening if this passes. This is to go on a ballot where every constituent gets to vote on it. Everybody that lined up to speak in favor, everybody that spoke against, they all get a voice in this matter. That's why I'm having a hard time understanding what is the fear to not put it on the ballot, because one of two things are gonna happen. Like, some of these folks said, the people don't want it. Fine, it gets crushed. But we had people that said, we need it, we want it. Are people scared it's gonna pass? I'm wondering, what's the reasoning that we wouldn't let every constituent in Greenville County have a say in this? That's just to Mr. Blunt's response. I agree with him. I think we need to listen to our constituents. I'm just having a hard time understanding why we wouldn't do that. It's not directed at you. I'm just, it's more of a...
Right. Since he said my name, can I respond to that? That's, while that's true, I've also talked to them about putting it on the ballot. And if everybody remembers, I said that I would agree to put my name, to vote yes, to put it on the ballot if the commission focused on road paving, which I don't feel like we did accurately, and if we were gonna focus on county roads, which we didn't do. So there's lots of reasons why you wouldn't support putting it on the ballot outside of just letting the citizens decide. The citizens don't know a lot about what goes on at the county, so it's a lot tougher than that.
Please, this is a conversation between elected members. Please keep your comments to yourself when we're debating. Thank you.
I'll respond to that, too. So you want to give them a voice, but you also want to speak for them, is what I'm hearing. I'm not directing at you. It's just more of a general statement for everybody. We can't have it both ways. We can't listen to them, but also say, but, this is what they're telling me, and I'm gonna do this. I've spoken to every member of my district, and this is, I've got all their voices heard. So I hear you. I'm just having a hard time understanding, what is the fear of putting it on the ballot? If it were to pass, are you saying, ah, no?
There's no fear. It's listening to my constituents, tell me they don't want it on the ballot.
Listening is getting...
They don't even want a voice. They don't want it on the ballot.
Okay, that's, okay. You don't want a voice.
Mr. Jubalakis?
Mr. Chairman, I think to help clarify that is, when we were in Cal, looking at passing this to council, some of the things Council Blunt just said was that if we just worked on county roads, yes. But the answer, and I agree with that, I don't agree with using our money for state roads when the state has, would somebody just say, how many billions of extra money the state has, and they want to tax us more? I don't want to do that. I don't think the people want to do that. That's not what the people are telling me. The other thing to help be a little clearer on the ballot issue, we said, I thought we said in Cal, and maybe I'm wrong, you, Levin can correct me, but it was my understanding, all the roads that we were gonna pave would be listed on the ballot. And my understanding now is, they're not all listed. So transparency is my problem with, we're not being honest to these citizens out here. So that's my problem with putting it on the ballot, because we're not, right now, doing what we said we were gonna do. So how can they trust us that when we get $1 billion, that we're gonna do the right thing? Thank you.
There are state rules that we have to go by. Every road will be listed on the ballot. That's what state law says, and we will go by state law. This is not an issue of transparency. That's a red herring. Mr. Harrison?
I just want to reiterate. Stan said it as well. Mr. Jubalakis said it as well just now. He said, that's what they're telling me. He's talking about his constituents. Again, we're putting words in their mouth. Let them say it. There's no harm in letting every member of Greenville County say it. If they say that, I agree. If they vote, if it gets 90 to 10, it gets decimated. That's fine. That's fine. But they deserve, as bad as the roads are right now, every resident in Greenville County should have a say in this.
Be transparent about what we put on the ballot.
We are.
All right. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a point of information. Maybe the administrator can help or something. Have we, as a council, or as staff or anything, paid any lobbyist or PR firms to, for this campaign? Because I am seeing some things that look coordinated. As far as campaigning for the tax...
Are you asking me?
Yeah. Well, I'm asking anybody who would know. Have we written any checks to any lobbyist or PR firms with respect to this roads tax?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I have no clue what you're talking about, Steve.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying is, have we, we have a PR person who is Mr. Maholic, who is in charge of our PR for the county.
He's Governmental Affairs.
Governmental Affairs, yeah. And I'm not trying to be adversarial. I'm really trying to figure this out. Have we paid any PR firms, any lobbyists at all, as consulting for passing this or promoting it?
Absolutely not. We can't.
Okay. Fair enough. And then my comment is basically, I think part of the confusion here, or part of how this is easily demagogued, is the difference between congestion and condition. I believe our budget can handle the condition of our roads if we prioritize correctly. Congestion can't be handled by throwing some billions of dollars at it. It has to be done through land use and responsible development. Thank you.
Mr. Blunt?
Just for clarification, on the sample ballot that we had, so are we saying that on the ballot in November, all the additional roads will be on the ballot, aside from what was on the sample ballot? Because if not, then all the roads are not listed on the ballot.
Then that's not a red herring.
Mr. Carlson?
All the roads are listed in the ordinance. It's too long a list to be on the ballot. So the form of ballot that we got from the Sales Tax Commission...
Ladies and gentlemen, please let us hear the opinion of the attorney.
Listed a number of projects. The ordinance has, the whole project list is attached to the ordinance, which is online.
And that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure we were clear, that all of the projects aren't on the ballot. And we did say at the beginning that all of them would be on the ballot. We could go back and look at the minutes, listen to the video. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Question, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Roll call.
Mr. Chairman, you have eight in favor, four opposed.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, that's supposed to go up on the list so that people can see.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. The ordinance is adopted, gets given second reading. Next item on the agenda is Item 12, ordinances at first reading, 12A zoning ordinances. I'll call on Dr. Fant for a series of zoning ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I present for first reading zoning dockets CZ 2024-037 and CZ 2024-040 through CZ 2024-046.
Those will be sent to Planning and Development. Next item on the agenda, first reading, Fountain Inn Fire Service Area 12B. Chairman Kirby.
Yes, sir. Fountain Inn Fire Service Area, General Obligation Bond. I present for first reading, an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale not exceeding $3,800,000 of Greenville County General Obligation Bond Fountain Inn Fire Service Area Project Series 2024-C, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended, to provide for the payment thereof and other matters related thereto.
All right. This will stay on the floor. Next item, Project Dragon Fire. Chairman Kirby.
Yes, sir. Also, at first reading, I present for first reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a Second Amendment to an existing fee in lieu of tax agreement between Greenville County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county as Project Dragon Fire, to provide for, under certain circumstances, certain additional special source revenue credits in connection with additional investment into certain manufacturing and related facilities in the county and other matters related thereto.
All right. This will stay on the floor as well. Next one, Item D, general Greenville Arena District Geo Bonds. Chairman Kirby.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I present for first reading, an ordinance finding that Greenville Arena District, South Carolina, may issue not exceeding $70 million of general obligation bonds in one or more series to authorize the Board of Trustees of the Greenville Arena District, South Carolina, to issue such bonds and to provide for the publication of notice of the said finding and authorization.
All right. That'll stay on the floor as well. Item E, final item.
Yes, sir. Item 12E, Special Tax District Millage Increase for Maintenance of Lighting. I present for first reading, an ordinance to provide for the millage or fee rate to be levied by certain special tax districts established for lighting purposes, including Bruton Town, Monigan, River Oak, Woodside Mills, Broadmoor, and Washington Heights Special Tax Districts.
All right. That'll stay on the floor as well.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this would be the right time for this, but I was gonna ask if we, I think we were gonna take Monigan out of this list, because they were gonna have some meetings and do some things to decide if they even want to move forward with this increase. So should we wait till second? Got you.
Second, would that have to be done by an amendment?
We can amend it.
Okay.
Or other motions. And, you know, your first reading is just read, no amendments.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, Committee Reports, and we have a committee, a report from the committee, the whole, from Chairman Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I move to authorize the county attorney to settle the following lawsuit according to the terms discussed in executive session, case number CA 2:22CV02389JDAMGB.
All those in favor of adoption of the committee, the whole report, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Administrator's report. I believe that brings us to the conclusion of our meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you for coming tonight. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. We're adjourned.